Good morning everybody and welcome to this meeting of all of the councillors' cabinet. Mrs Tompkins has some notices to read at this afternoon.
Thank you Chairman. Firstly I'd like to extend a warm welcome to all members and visitors to our cabinet meeting this morning. And before starting the business of the meeting, I will explain the evacuation procedures for this building, the access arrangements for this meeting room, and where you can find the public inaccessible toilets. On hearing the evacuation alarm bell which will have a constant ring, everyone should leave the meeting room at once by way of the nearest available exit. You should then leave the building by way of the nearest available signed fire exit boot and make your way to the front of the town hall building. The Democratic Services Officer which is myself will take any saving persons to the designated assembly area to await assistance. This meeting room is fitted with an induction loop for the benefit of hearing aid users. Hearing aids should be switched to the T setting to use the loop. The nearest ladies toilets and accessible toilets can be found along the corridor to the right of the entrance door to this meeting room, and the nearest gentlemen's toilets can be found along the corridor to the left of the entrance door to this meeting room. Please note that to exit the town hall via the front side entrance, you will need to enter a four-digit code into the keypad located on the wall to the left of the door. And finally, before I go on to the next notice, may I ask everyone to please switch off their mobile phones? Can I read out the notices relating to audio recording and filming proceedings of cabinet meetings? Please be aware that under the Local Authorities' Executive Arrangement's Meeting in Access to Information in England Regulations 2012, this cabinet meeting may be audio recorded and filmed for live or subsequent broadcast by members of the public or representatives of the media. Any person intending to audio record or film this meeting are asked to note for this meeting today, the whole of the meeting may be filmed or recorded. Requested not to film the public gallery and asked to respect requests from other members of the public to cease recording when they speak, for example when presenting a deputation, petition, or asking a question. I would also remind members of the common law duty of confidentiality under which you could place yourself at risk of being sued by another private individual if you disclose confidential personal information about such persons in a meeting. Please note that the chairman has absolute discretion to order that audio recording and filming is suspended or terminated if in his opinion continuing to do so will prejudice the proceedings of the meeting. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you very much Mrs Tompkins. Just before we go to the first item on the agenda, I would like to welcome back councillor West for the first meeting of cabinet, who's attended some time. And I hope that our messages from earlier cabinets whilst you were away were conveyed to you, they were recorded in the minutes. So welcome back to council and of course we welcomed you back to full council only last week. And I hope your recovery continues at pace.
Very good.
And welcome to councillor Whitaker, who seems to be on the mend at the moment. It's great to see you here councillor Ron, and glad that you could make it again today.
Shall we say a word to the absolute wind of that?
Please.
It's a very good idea. And I would ask Mrs Tompkins from Democratic Services please to deal with items one through to four on the agenda.
Thank you Chairman. Can I first report apologies from councillor Lawton, who is on alternative local government business this week, and also apologies from councillor David Smith and councillor Nicola Green. Moving on to item two, can I ask members to make any declarations of interest in respect of the issues that you have for this morning? Chairman, item three, confirmation of minutes, the minutes from your last meeting in 28th of May are now published and I would ask if cabinet are so minded to confer those minutes, Chairman.
Right please.
Item four Chairman, I can report there are no public questions, no deputation requests, and no request to submit petitions for this meeting.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item five on the agenda, which is the minutes of the local development framework steering group, held on the 19th of June. Conferences have been circulated and tabled this morning.
Some sketchy.
If anybody else needs any, there are some additional ones here. It would be normal for the chairman, that was councillor Chapman, to be here to present those minutes. Councillor Chapman is attending a funeral this morning, a funeral at which I otherwise would have attended myself as well, and so he cannot be here. I'm wondering, although he were here, it would be better if it were not me presenting them. Councillor Ron, you were present, would you prefer to present the minutes?
Yes, very happy to present. Would you like me to do all three of them?
Yes, I think so, yes.
I'm happy to move them Chairman, and what was said, it was limited I think of our thanks to the officers in what was said to do with the consultation and the parking issues, the kind of work that they put in. Also, we've made reference to, there were some one or two negative comments from people put in representations, but I was very pleased, like all the panel members as you know, about the parking spaces in any new developments now we're taking into account because of the increasing, not necessarily car size, but the difficulties, many people are in firm, or the difficulty getting in and out of cars, and I'm one of them, probably what just came to my mind to talk about. Any new developments, spaces now will be slightly increased, so I welcome that Chairman, but I'm more than happy to move the exceptions of all three.
Thank you very much indeed for that councillor Ron, and we will accept those recommendations. And obviously the next item on the agenda is the Parking Supplementary Planning Document itself anyway. So thank you for doing that councillor Ron. From me, a thank you to the members of the LDF for the work that they have done on this, and especially that work from the specific officers as well, who are completely required in the same. Councillor Baxter.
Thank you Leader. As I was at the meeting, okay, and I'm here today, for purposes or clarity, it's recorded in the minute that I gave a personal interest in the alternative new road development scheme due to only a property in the affected area, so I'd like that noted please.
Yes, certainly. Now I'll ask Tompkins to replicate that same declaration as we did last week. Thank you for that. Did you want to add anything to the notes of the conference today?
Nothing, nothing so.
Thank you very much. So moving on to item six on our agenda, Parking Supplementary Planning Document, which is going to be taken by councillor Mike Green in the absence of portfolio holder David Smith. But prior to that, I'd just like to ask Mr Cotton, Executive Director, to introduce the paper and make one or two comments.
Thank you Chairman. Thank you Chairman. As we've seen, this Supplementary Planning Document has had extensive consultation, it's been through the LDF. I'd just like to build on the points that councillor Ron made just then. There are one or two anomalies and errors prepped into the response to the consultation. So on page 10, I'd like to make a change, again as picked up by the LDF through. So on page 10, where it talks about the five metre times 2.5 metre base are 4% larger, let's just make that five metres times 2.6 metre base are 13% larger. And that same point is picked up on page 14, where it's 2.6 metres to 2.5 metres. Just to confirm to the cabinet that that size of bay of 2.6 metre was in the initial consultation and remains in the draft for approval today.
Thank you for that Mr Cotton, and that's as detailed in the LDF minutes that have been delivered this morning, for that justification that's right. So in the absence of portfolio holder, councillor Martin.
Thank you very much Leader. As we've seen from the paper, it was necessary to update the parking standards, the current ones have been in place since 2002, for in which there have been considerable changes in the size of vehicle, the use of vehicle, and also in other council policies to do with transportation parking in general. So it was required to do so. Members will remember that we discussed this back in December in cabinet, and it then went through to the consultation programme that both Mr Cotton and councillor Whitaker have referred to into the public. There are a number of items that came back, as you have seen, many of those have been addressed specifically by officers when we came to see the proposal that is before us today for adoption, and members will have had the opportunity to have read that in detail by clicking on the links that were there with the online paper. They're specified in background papers as the Parking SPD adoption version, and members will have had a chance to go through those in detail as required. Just a couple of the points that I would just make. First of all, that the existing standards, as we hold them at the moment, do not comply or do not fully take into account some of the advances that have been taken on national policy and national planning framework. So that was another reason that it needed to be done at this time. And also that with some of the information that's come back and some of the ideas that have come back, changes have been made to the consultation document, particularly with respect to scooter and cycle parking in schools, and making sure that where there's school development going on, and that there will be sufficient to encourage those forms of sustainable transfer to schools. With that, I'd like just to move the recommendations as they are on front page please.
Thank you very much. Second one. Are there any questions from members who are not on the cabinet? Councillor West?
Well, this will be a test, whether I can do what I want to do. Can you hear me Leader?
Yes.
I ask that because I have problems with my ear, and therefore I don't know what I sound upon. With it after this, I did sense in a committee staff, my views, that there's a great list of people who could or weren't assaulted, but the amount of responses were very poor. I would have liked to have seen more from diverse agents, I would like to see more from people like Dave Wells, who has very strong views about over-provision of housing, and there's nothing from the bus company. I think it's a shame when this handful does not engage, or the public does not want to engage with this handful, that means they do up with that. I hope you'll be able to understand the point of that.
Yes indeed, thank you councillor West. I don't think it's a question of the panel not to engage, I think the panel has engaged with a longer list than they would normally do, and indeed, LDF at its meeting last week drew attention to the extensive nature of the list, almost to the point of suggesting that perhaps it was too wide, too long. It is disappointing, but perhaps those longer lists don't have issues that they want to raise on this particular paper, and perhaps many are more content than we might expect, I don't know. I don't know whether Mr Cotton, you could add anything on the consultation?
No, I was just going to make that exact same point.
Any other comments, any other questions?
Chairman, I was also going to make a similar point on that, but I think it's worth making very clear that where we do hear from anybody who comes forward with a development proposal and does not feel that they wish to comply with a new policy and ask for extension to that, that we will be very clear with them, that we have given them the opportunity to discuss that. As pointed out, that's an extensive list, and I would be very disappointed if one of those on the list that we have consulted with has chosen not to come back to us and then chooses to basically to move it out to the later stage.
Right, I think it's kind of important, if you're looking at making the point, that particularly areas that are cross the, the over-provision of parking spaces is something that's very serious. I think you were actually the chairman of the planning board when I moved the position of development in moving the days to have no parking spaces. It went through and I believe it's been a success because of the so-called, that's the point I was trying to make.
Thank you for your comments, thank you. Councillor Baxter?
Just a comment Leader, okay, just a question. I mentioned it at the local development meeting last week, okay, and I'd like it obviously again mentioned in the minutes, that there's a lot of work into this, and the document that we've been looking into is very thorough and very concise, I think I mentioned you to go back to that.
Thank you very much. And I'm sure that's, I believe that was in comments with Ailis' message. Any questions or comments from the members of the cabinet? We have moved all the two recommendations that have been proposed separately, so we'll go straight to the vote, all as in favour of these individuals. That takes us to paper seven, which is a review of the local development scheme, and again in the absence of portfolio holder, councillor Mike Green, please to take this paper.
Thank you very much Leader. This is a technical paper, it is a statutory paper that we have to bring through, and only goes to predict or to give advice about the procedures that we intend, the timetable we intend to follow as we go through developing the planning documents, the development plan documents. Please note that anything to do with supplementary planning guidance is not included in the local development scheme here, it's taken outside. If I could just draw your attention to the one item which is the community infrastructure levy or SIL, there was a requirement, because of changes at national government level, for us to change our own timetable for adoption of those, and you'll see that that is now still predicted to be in place by April 15, which is when the requirements from national government will come into being. If I could also just use this opportunity to say something, I probably should have done during the last one, and that's to add my thanks as well to the local development framework steering group for the work that they have done both on this and the other. I'm delighted that they have unanimously recommended that we go through with the recommendations here, and I so move it.
One second. Any questions from members who are not on the cabinet? Questions or comments from members on the cabinet? We will go straight to the vote, all as in favour of these individuals. That takes us to item eight on the agenda, which is cabinet paper on revenue capital closely managed without terms for 2013-14 and the refresh of the medium term financial plan. And I'd ask Mrs Wilkinson, please, if you could just run through the various issues that are in here, they're highlighted in the recommendations on page two, and I'll answer those in a moment when you finish speaking.
Thank you. The outer report is a reflection back on how we performed in preceding financial year, so for us that is of course 13-14. And this year we've actually also included for the first time a first quarter update on the medium term financial plan, which is a piece of work looking forward into future years and how we are going to cope with our future financial position as an authority. So if I take those in two separate pieces briefly, the reflect back on 13-14, the first half of the report, is basically setting out how well we did by the year end in meeting out a target of achieving a net new balance position on our annual budget position. In February, when we set the budget, we were forecasting a small revenue outturn surplus of approximately 20,000, sorry approximately 20,000. And that's actually increased to the period year end up to a gross outturn figure of 293,000, i.e. we did a little bit better in closing down and pulling back on our financial spend in order to make sure that we didn't overspend at year end in correct deficit, so that's very welcome. After taking account of legitimate requests and sanctioned requests for revenue carry forward items, which make up a number of small requests to continue with some project work over the year end period, that outturn surplus, the net position's been taken down to around about 190k net surplus position. The net surplus's been taken in on a pro-ten basis into general earmarked at year end before we come back in July to actually look at our performance over the first quarter and make any decisions about where we might allocate those resources for current year and future year purposes. And those are reflected with most of the recommendations there. The other item of course is the capital violent issue. A violent is when you move monies from one financial year to another financial year, as well as more traditionally when you move it between a cost centre, and in this instance those capital violents are moving resources from one year into the next year in order for those long-term project pieces to be able to continue and to deliver their long-term schemes. Because of the materiality of both of those violents, they must go up to council for approval, because clearly they have material to the budget that was set in February and the capital programme that was accepted then. Moving on to the MTFP update, this is us very much trying to make sure that we accelerate our budget cycle this year in the full of certain knowledge that we have a significant challenge that we need to deal with in terms of managing our resource and gap as forecast. I think the good news so far is that we have already, as a result of the endeavours around securing the actual delivery of planned savings and efficiencies, been able to reduce that gap down by around about one and a half of six million in the first quarter as a result of actual performance within services to deliver. And I think that's very much to be welcomed at this stage. Clearly however, we remain far from complacent because obviously we still have a very significant resource and gap of around about sixteen and a half million pounds. And obviously the paragraph forty-two and forty-three set out how the organisation is intending to actually manage that gap so that we're able to bring forward proposals for a balanced budget for 15-16, and that is by having principally an extremely rigorous budget cycle, that we are beginning earlier than ever and engaging across the organisation and with members in doing so so that we're able to ensure that our resource allocation and prioritisation work is both thoughtful and thorough. Thank you Leader.
Thank you very much Mrs Wilkinson. So it's for me to move the recommendations, so at the outset there is one minor amendment to be made to recommendation seven, and that is to exclude the two words that cancelled at the beginning of that recommendation, so it begins as would be appropriate for the others with the word note, the latest position, which is very minor but important. And I'm moving all eight recommendations, and it's only recommendation number eight that goes to full council for gratification for the reasons that Mrs Wilkinson has outlined. The outturn and how we deal with that and its mother-related issues, as Mr Wilkinson said, will be dealt with at our July cabinet meeting, and it's appropriate that we should do that in terms of looking forward with those items. There are, this is really a position of taking stock of where we are, and of course, the medium term financial plan latest position, as has been already identified, we are doing this starting sooner than we've had done in previous years, with the idea being that we actually deal with quite a number of the basic issues, the early issues, prior to the summer recess. And officers, portfolio holders, and members are engaged in that process to try and bring forward that work, so it gives us sufficient time to go through the further work we'll need to do from September onwards. The challenge, as identified in our budget in February this year, is a challenge that I am confident this council can manage to address in the way and on the scale that it has done over the last several years. So although the figure is as a headline seemingly very high, we have made a small inroad into it, to the extent of 1.6 million so far, it isn't of a scale that is different from that challenge that we faced in each of the last few years. And I'm therefore confident with the work starting earlier that we will actually end up in a position, when we come to presenting a budget for setting a council act in February next year, that will be achievable and sustainable. And those two words are the key ones for all of us in today's financial scenario. So I move the eight recommendations and I seek a second one. So questions for members who are not on the cabinet? Councillor West, you've sent me this morning a number of questions about the budget paper, and I would ask, would you be satisfied if this book gives you a response to that without your need of reading them out?
Why would you read them out if you don't? I'd like to read them out in a public meeting if you don't mind.
Very well, go ahead councillor West.
Well councillor, the preamble, because it would be very interesting what you said about the medium term financial plan. Some of this will not be intelligible to you, because if you haven't got the basic book in front of you, you won't understand what I'm saying, because that has a taste in my words forever, what I'm saying is correct. My question is, on page 93 of the budget book, general funds and earmarked reserves for 31, 31st of March 13, are 19.2 million, where in Appendix B of the paper just presented today, there are 14.885 million. How can that be? There's a similar problem with capital reserves on the same date. Budget book page 93, 28.67 million, yet the recorded Appendix B, there are recorded to be an incredible 50 million. Now these are not incidentally, unless I've completely misunderstood the report I've been reading.
I'll ask Mrs Wilkinson to respond to those detailed questions.
Yes, thank you councillor West. Both the items that you identified arise very simply as a result of the difference between the closing year-end position as at the 31st of March, as compared to the opening position on the 1st of April each year. It is the policy and practice of this organisation for all transfers into and out of reserves between one year end and the beginning of the new year to take place on the 1st of April, i.e. at that year-end point. This means that all of the allocations and changes in reserves that were set out in detail in the budget paper, in the MTFP paper in February's council meeting, i.e. council's budget, are made on the 1st of April. So in respect of the revenue change that you've identified and the difference between those documents, the closing position was 19.208 million on general earmarked. The budget allocations within the budget paper in February that council approved to take effect on the 1st of April totaled about 4.6 million, and they are set out in detail in that budget paper as part of the reserve strategy, meaning that the opening position that's been cited for the 1st of April is 14.585 million. So that explains why there is that difference. They are reflecting allocations approved by council already in setting the budget for 14-15. It is a similar case in respect of capital, albeit in respect of this year, change over between years, it's slightly more complicated, a little bit more granular, and simply because of the timing issue that when we receive DCLG grant monies of 22 million pounds...
of the timing issue that when we receive DCLG grant monies of twenty-two million pounds for the big bin, little bin scheme, which cost over between years. So I can, I'm quite happy to give you reconciliation of that separately, but it would take me far too much time to go through all of the grain of that in this meeting. And I think that that's all that there is to it, it's just a simple change in opening and closing positions and reflecting the decisions made by council and affecting those on the first of April each year.
I don't think this is the right place to debate that, because how is that to sit in writing? All right, you could read what we said on our call, and both calls said thirty-first of March, I did not say the first of April. However, it's not fair for me to challenge Mrs Wilkinson on her statement, I'd like to read it first of all.
I'd be delighted to provide you with that in writing, councillor West, it's absolutely fine.
I'm sure you would, yes. The central question, if you'll bear with me, Leader, is related to page eleven of the report in front of me. Now, everybody can see that. Page eleven, item forty-one A, refers to table six, but there is no table six. The only table I haven't seen is table three, and after that, four, five and six, it is ours, I think, are not in the pages that I've been given.
Mrs Wilkinson?
Again, I'm very happy to answer that, Leader. It is simply human error, I'm afraid it should have said table three, and it didn't say table three, it said table six. It is a typo that was not picked up on our QA process, as the text of forty-one A clearly indicates, it is obviously referring back up to table three. There has never been a table six, it's just a typing mistake when it was printed, when it was being typed out. Sorry. I apologise if it's misled your confusion.
You bear in mind that I'm not the brightest person, and on top of that, I am under the phone as a bit of a strain, and it wasn't obvious to me to a bit of a typo. The third question, in actual fact, I did send you after it, because the whole gist of this paper, I don't think you emphasised the seriousness of the position we're in. There is never a question in my mind, Leader, you've done a very good job, so yes, it's where we are. You have managed to make sure that we have not had severe costs, and we have maintained our services. You've done a good job of handling it wherever possible. I just don't believe that there's another sixteen million pounds that this house had missed over all these years, that isn't going to have an effect seriously on my residents. And that is an interesting bit for me, you know, how you're going to tackle that, because it is a huge sum of money. And if you make one of them, one and a half, it has a very small step forward, you see. So you have my full support in finding it, and I'd be pleased to know how you do it, Leader.
Well, you won't be the first person to ask me that question, and that's been the case over the last several years, of course. As I indicated earlier, the size of that problem is actually in a magnitude not that different from that challenge that we faced this time last year, and indeed, this time the year before that. And in each of those cases, we've managed to address that problem, get to a balanced budget proposal at full council, and set a council act which has been frozen for the last four years. And we've managed to do that against a background, as you rightly say, that is not promising, and certainly not one where we're getting very, very much help indeed from the government while we're getting these fresh challenges. I'm confident by starting this process earlier this time that we will continue with